Okay.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, November 1st, 2018, 5:15 PM. Time for the special meeting of the Wenatchee City Council.
Frank and Karen's meeting.
Called a meeting to order. First item, we'd pledge to our flag. Councilmember Poyer, would you lead us?
Yes, thank you.
Since you're back, if you'd be better.
I think the outcome of that meeting today was good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for roll call tonight, we have six of seven council members today. I don't know where Councilmember Huffaker is. We saw him this morning. So first item on our agenda tonight will be the consent items, which includes the agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items, including the agenda for this evening's meeting, the vouchers, and the minutes from previous meetings.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This should be a time of interment. Any member of the audience that would want to address the city council, we give you three minutes. Ask for your name and address. Seeing no takers. We have three presentations tonight. The first is regarding Global Entrepreneurship Week. Who has that?
I have that, your honor.
Councilmember Bailey.
Whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week is an annual occurrence intended to inspire people to unleash their ideas and take the next step in their entrepreneurial journey, connecting them to potential collaborators, mentors, and even investors. And whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week is a celebration of the innovators and job creators who launch startups that bring ideas to life, drive economic growth, and expand human welfare. And whereas Global Entrepreneurship Week connects community members with a vibrant ecosystem of entrepreneurs, investors, researchers, policymakers, and other startup champions. And whereas millions of people take part in Global Entrepreneurship Week across thousands of communities in 170 countries worldwide during the second week in November. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim November 12th through 18th, 2018, as Global Entrepreneurship Week in the city of Wenatchee and encourage all and invite all citizens to attend the Networking, Mentoring, and Educational Advance Plan in recognition of this week. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this first day of November, 2018. Frank J. Coons, mayor.
Thanks to Councilmember Bailey. Stacy, are you here for this?
I am.
Excellent. It all makes sense now.
One of the many members will be disappearing here shortly after, too.
Good. Are you going to get your picture taken?
Oh, lovely. I didn't know this.
She will be on tape soon.
No, not very much. All right.
Do you want to address the council about anything of this or not?
You know, I just hope we can make this a yearly thing. That's my address.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you very much.
What kind of events are going to go on?
We have, we're cooking up a couple others that will be pretty informal. The economic, the north central Washington Economic Development District is dedicating about 45 minutes of their meeting to updates on entrepreneurship and entrepreneurial efforts across the region Wednesday of that week. And then Guara is hosting their entrepreneurial panel that week as well. So those are two. We have a number of our other smaller cities across the region that are also doing declarations. And so I have other chamber members from those smaller areas that are going to be at those meetings to accept and share that.
Good.
Yeah, fun stuff. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stacy. All right, we have two other presentations. The first is regarding our 2018 budget amendment. So we've done one amendment sort of mid-year to keep the auditors happy. And I guess we will have a second amendment that we will be adopting soon. And then we have our 2019 preliminary budget review, which also has the capital items associated with it. So Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, I am very surprised at the lack of turnout from the public for this budget presentation. I'm hoping that it'll at least be doubled in two weeks when we adopted it.
I think they call that a Midsummer Night's Dream.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've got to help Steve with the math what 2 times 0 is.
Yeah, yeah.
Because he's not sure what that is.
So first of all, I've got the budget amendment for, the final budget amendment for 2018. So by state law and by city code, we are required to stay within our budget, which is a good thing. And so there have been several different budget amendments that have been preliminarily approved by the Finance Committee. And so those will have to be formally adopted by council. And we have a two-week advertising and hearing process. So I think it just got started. And two weeks from now, the council will be asked to adopt this ordinance. Some, a few of the things that go into this, some of the big ones, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that was approved for the purchase of three patrol vehicles. It was a good deal on them. And it was kind of the last of that, last of that model. So that's coming out of the general fund. There's, some of the things are more accounting issues where there was another 200,000 that was, that the cash was set aside for the Hilton property years ago. And the cash was already set aside. But it came this year that we had to expense it. And so since we had an expense and we didn't build that expense into the budget, we needed to make an adjustment for the budget for that. Most of these adjustments, we probably will actually have enough budget in these funds that we don't necessarily have to make the budget adjustments. But we just want to be on the safe side and cover our bases to make sure that we don't bump into any legal issues in exceeding our budget by the end of the year. Another, another item on here, you'll see under the Streets Fund, there's a large amount there that goes to cover all the work that's been done, all the overlay that's been done around the city that you've been seeing. And so there's just a bunch of, a bunch of different things. Finance Committee has reviewed all of these. So I guess I wonder if you have any questions for me tonight or if there's any information I can provide you on this between now and two weeks from now that you don't have.
I would add just a couple of things. I think on the total appropriations, for instance, if you go to the Sewer Fund and it says our water and sewer utility that we were going to spend $22 million this year, most of those appropriations of those major ones, we're not spending all of that money this year. They have the authority and the budget to do so. They're not going to spend anywhere near that. So these sort of ending fund balances, especially in Streets and Sewer, are going to end up being way higher than that, right? We're not spending all of the money in our arterial street fund, right? There shows spending 7.8 million. And I don't know if we spent a million, to be honest with you. So just, their appropriations are there. The ending fund balances, because we're not really going to spend all the appropriation, is quite a bit higher than what that is showing.
Yep.
You know, we've sort of told them, like in the Street Department, you've got enough money, so go out and spend. You know, you see the strip seals that they've been doing. And we said, spend some of it. You've got so much money in the savings account. Go out and get some of that done. So there really is a lot more in the funding and the ending fund balances than is what is being showed here just because they have the authority to spend it, but they're not going to spend it.
Yep.
They'll, will they, they'll like carry it over for next year and spend it next year?
So in February or March, when we get the books done and after we go through with all of our department heads, this will get updated prior to the audit. But it'll be updated and we'll get to see what the actual expenditures were, what the actual fund balances sort of are, probably end of February-ish.
Yep. I think it's usually the second Finance Committee in February.
Yeah. But all the rest of these went through the Finance Committee and got their approval. The revenue one, the 750, is that just?
That's sales tax.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's, yep, that's pretty much just the difference in what we had budgeted for sales tax. There, yeah, yep.
Okay. So that'll be a 2018 budget amendment that we'll see in a couple of weeks that requires a majority of the council plus ones. We will need five votes for that. So we'll have to make sure we time it when we have a full group of council members there.
All right.
Any questions for Brad on the 2018 budget amendment? All right, let's look at the 2019 preliminary final budget.
Right. So I believe it was October 11th that we met and you got the first, one of the first peaks at the 2019 budget. That included the, basically that was the 2018 budget rolled over to 2019. Salaries and benefits were estimated. Revenues were projected. And then the departments made requests for, for their operating budget requests. And those were reviewed by Finance Committee. Those were all included in that last round of budget that you saw. Since then, we have added, there have been a couple small tweaks to the budget. But the big items that were added was the capital budget. All the departments provided their capital project, all their capital project wish lists for 2019. And substantially, all of them were, have been included in this current budget. They're all, almost all of them are the street, big street projects, the big utility projects that are out there. So those have also been built on, on top of this budget. So just looking at the, on the first page of it, the recurring, in general fund, the recurring, it's still balanced. Because, well, one, by policy, we have to have that balanced. We were able to make a couple revenue tweaks to offset some of the expense. Some, you can just see the minor things. There were a couple 60,000 on each side that we were able to change. The non-recurring, that's where there was a big change, which is because there were a lot of capital asks on the general fund that are all one-time items. And in, in reality, just the way I've seen things work in the two budgets that I've, the two years that I've seen play out here, there are a lot of capital requests that are made. And so we may have a commitment of this $4 million for these one-time requests. However, the way things end up playing out, I can't imagine that we'll actually spend all of that $4 million because some of those projects, we probably just won't get around to doing. Or maybe the requests are for a little bit more than what the project will actually end up costing. Some of them will roll into 2020. And so they won't actually come out of the 2019 budget. So it looks like a big number. And on that non-recurring, it looks like we're taking a big bite out of our, out of our fund balance. I don't anticipate it to be that big of a bite out of our fund balance. And however, we can't, we won't be able to continue that rate of one-time spending year after year after year. We, this is kind of a, we've got a very healthy fund balance right now. There's some big projects that the city's wanting to tackle. And it's a good time to do that. So we can spend off a little bit of our fund balance, but we probably won't want to do that year after year for the next five years.
And what we have done with the non-recurring capital items, the budget here's got $4 million. If they don't get spent, because they don't, it doesn't happen because they get busy, it gets off the slate and they have to ask for it again for the next year. So it doesn't automatically go in. So what do you mean? That was important. You put it in the budget. We didn't get it done. So it's, it's still important. So there's some things that we've actually didn't make it through into this one that was in last year's that as we thought about it, we said, well, let's, let's wait. Let's sort of see where this, you know, one of the ones was, we've talked about the, you know, welcome to Wenatchee on the right-hand side. And we've got all those, I'll get the term wrong, arboritas.
Junipers.
Junipers that are all going to burn down, right? And we're trying to be a firewise community. We've set aside some money to sort of fix that, right? And we're like, okay. Bids came in three times what we thought they were going to be. We thought the Conservation District would help us. They said, well, no, not really interested. Yet, we're getting ready to do some work on North Wenatchee Avenue in the next three or four or five years with all of the connecting Washington dollars. Are we better off sort of waiting and throwing that in as we're doing connecting Washington stuff? Or are we going to try to do it now? And so we're going to bid it. And if it comes in reasonable, so it's just one of those ones. Like, okay, maybe that's worth waiting for now. So just because it's in it, doesn't mean, one, it's going to get done. And two, if it doesn't get done, it'll get back in the, in the hopper for next year to see if it still rates it something that needs to happen. So I think the policy works fairly well.
Yep, I think so, too. So I think you've had a chance to take a look at it. It's been in your packet. So again, this will come to you. There'll probably be a couple little tweaks in it between now and two weeks from now. I don't see that it's going to substantially change. There may be a couple small, small items that'll, that'll be a little bit different, but we can go over that in two weeks. So I guess my question is, if you have any questions for me about the budget as it's been presented at this point, or if there's any information that you want me to provide to you in the next two weeks to help get a better picture of where we're at and where we're going?
I have a question, Brad. So the ending fund balance of roughly $7 million does not include the $2 million that's in the rainy day fund?
It doesn't.
Okay.
That's, yeah. So even if we did spend the budget to the penny in 2019 and we still ended up with $7 million, that's still, that's 28% of our recurring expenses, which is still higher than what our goal, by policy. By policy, we want a 15% reserve in our, in the general fund. That's required. But then our goal is 25%. So even if we did, which I don't anticipate, I would anticipate that we probably wouldn't go less than 8.5 million when this, when 2019 all plays out. Even though the budget says seven, we never, rarely, I shouldn't say never, but we rarely actually spend what our budget is. And we typically always bring in more revenue than we budget as well. So, so yes, that 28% ending fund balance does not include the $2 million in the rainy day fund, which would then take this up to probably 35% or 40%.
And then I guess I would just add that we did go through the capital budget process at the Finance Committee last week. And so I think most of these have been through the Finance Committee on a couple of different occasions. So I think for the most part, we're probably ready to go. I'm not sure if there's anything that will come up. Maybe some minor little things that I'll talk about in the mayor's report, but I don't think anything significant. All right, any questions for Brad?
No, just a comment, I guess, that, you know, it looks good. I think that, you know, the comment about, you know, the non-recurring, you know, okay, spending where we are. And I guess I look back on this over the, my tenure on the council started in, kind of at the low point with the recession and the town Toyota Center combining together to put us in a pretty deep hole. And, you know, it's somewhat comforting to look, look at that. I think adding again another half a million to the rainy day fund to get that up to around $2 million, you know, that's, that makes me feel, feel pretty good. But I think the other day, Brad and I were talking about today. And, you know, the, the fact that when all that stuff was playing out in 2008, '09, '10, I didn't, probably didn't really realistically expect to ever see the repay on the, for an art center in my lifetime, you know, kind of thing. And we've pretty much, you know, we're going to be reclaiming that, most of that here in the next couple of years, so.
I think the, the ending balance was 5.5 million and we've collected 5 million so far. So we'll get the last $500,000 next September.
Yeah. And so that's given us a pretty good chunk of cash to spend now what we could have had to spend, you know, seven, eight years ago. So the numbers look good. We've got, the reserve is clearly well within our, within our policy and gives us a pretty good cushion. So we've gotten a lot done. I mean, hats off to the staff this year for getting a ton of stuff done. You know, there's just an immense amount of stuff. And I've gotten a lot of good reports back on, you know, I think probably more than anything, the, when I explain to them, you know, who's paying for why, usually the question is, who's paying for all of this? It seems like a lot of work. How much is it costing us? And I, you know, I say, well, you know, the Mission Street thing, yeah, you know, you know, the state's, you know, paying, paying that one. But all those side streets. And then, and that's got, a lot of people remarked about how really nice it is to have all those side, side approached streets to, you know, pave and stuff.
You should have talked to me because I'm telling people, we did the whole project.
When it works out well, that's good. If there were problems, we could call 664.
No, it is pretty amazing the amount of street work that got done. And I know they're not quite all the way done yet, but it really looks nice. And those side streets are amazing.
Yeah.
Many of those side streets are really, they were pretty rough.
Yep.
And I think most of that's out of the 20 lot car tabs that we spent for a couple of years. So I think most of that is what's paying for that, which is nice. That's what it's there for. And I think it's cost-effective to team up with the, with the DOT when they're out there doing that work.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And, you know, we've got two more years of our city street system getting some form of chip seal and another round of the, what you saw this year with another round after that of chip sealing. So we've got two more years where we're going to spend, I don't know, $3 and $4 million each year, somewhere around $7, I think. Spend that street money down and, yeah, so.
Yep. Looking good.
Someone told me the city's looking good. That's what I heard. All right. Thanks, Brad. All right, we've got just one action item tonight or two? I can't, we got two, I guess. So the first is regarding Lineage and a lease with them. And then something regarding our old garbage site. So Allison?
Yes. So the first item I have before you tonight, the only item I have before you tonight, Allison Williams, Executive Services Director, is a lease agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Lineage Logistics. Lineage is the company that bought out Coal Stores Holdings. A part of what makes their operation work is access to the water intake that used to be a part of our old water plant. And so the 10-year agreement was coming to an end this year at quite a favorable lease rate. So staff went in and looked at, looked at replacement value and depreciated it out and came up with a lease rate and a present value that was more reflective of where we should be.
What was it before?
$335 plus leasehold excise tax on an annual basis. And so this new lease amount is $6,600. The leasehold excise tax equates to about $850 on an annual basis. And they provided us back with a red line version that's been reviewed by staff and our city attorney. And they have already signed it. But it was up for your consideration tonight. And we would ask for your approval.
So this just gives them access to the water?
Mm-hmm.
Through our water system? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. So they run that much water through there?
Eight, 24/7, it's an 8-inch pipe.
And is that part of our water, right? Or do they have a separate service water withdrawal, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're getting money right out of the river, then?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, your honor, I'd make a motion that the council authorize the mayor's signature on the lease agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Lineage Logistics LLC.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Markhart to authorize the mayor's signature on the lease agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Lineage Logistics LLC. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a stupid question. We can't utility tax that water intake because it's their own water from the Columbia? So we don't get to use the utility tax on that? We don't meter it in any way?
Yes, not our utility.
Just trying to figure out a way to.
And they have their own sewage disposal system.
Yeah. Just trying to figure out a way, we should try to hook them up.
I was thinking of a way to say yes. Wasn't coming up with anything.
All right, so. No, this is yours, Steve. Tell them how good your negotiation went with the friends.
Good evening, mayor and council.
At the hotel.
Steve King, Economic Development Director. Tonight, this item before you is a request to authorize a settlement agreement in the amount of $184,079.81. The basis for the settlement agreement is, you just heard Brad talk about $200,000 in the budget for, that was part of our purchase agreement for the pilings that they, they drove 400 and some pilings underneath the foundation of the hotel down there. And so also in that purchase agreement, we had a clause in there that when they dug up contaminated soil, the city would be responsible for disposing of that soil as well as bringing in clean fill. And we had anticipated that that would probably be somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000. It depends on the size of the swimming pool, elevator pits, light posts, water trenches. So you can't really pin that down. It's just kind of wait and see. As they went through the construction, you might recall there was a mounded area in the back where we, when we were in the mud out there, we stockpiled a bunch of the contaminated soil in the back where they were just going to have some landscaping. Well, Hilton came back during their design and said, we want some more parking spots. And so that was the place where the parking spots were in. So that soil that we had stockpiled in the back also went to the landfill, which is the bulk of this $184,000. I tried to negotiate that down a little bit and, and was met with, well, if you want to negotiate, I'm going to bring all the bills. So, so that ended pretty quickly. They, they felt they were coming forward with a pretty fair request in that they're not requesting any money for any backfill. And honestly, the, if we would have had to go in there and haul that out with our own crews, our own trucks, it would have probably cost us more. They took care of it. So I think all in all, this is what's quite a bit more than I wanted to pay. It's probably fair and it satisfies the terms of the contract. We had Steve Smith drop this agreement so that they can't come back to us for any more. And they understand that. And so that's the long and short of it.
Pay for with LRF money.
Yep.
So we're sort of nickel and diming that pot away a little bit. And Ecology sending us a check in the mail? Where's that at?
Ecology, there was a budget allowance for $400,000 to come to the city of Wenatchee for, to help us pay for some of the remediation there. And Ecology is having, we're just not getting the paperwork done. Or they're not getting their paperwork done. They keep promising it. I check in about every two to four weeks and, and ask them when we're going to get our check. So I think we're, long, or short answer is, I think we're going to get it. I just don't know when. Yeah. With your help, replenish the LRF account.
Steve, where was the disposal of that?
It all went to the landfill. That's why it's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
So I think there was $24,000 in trucking. The rest of it was disposal fees at the landfill. Yeah.
And we got to see those receipts.
Yep, I have a stack.
Ended there instead of a ravine someplace.
Yep, I've got a.
We're going to be on the hook for.
Yeah. I had to actually authorize the disposal at the landfill before they'd take it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, it's, you know, we turned the garbage dump into a hotel and there's just sort of additional costs that we're like, yeah. And again, these guys have been great to deal with. In fact, Steve and Allison and I toured the facility last week. And it's costing them, I think, quite a little bit more than they thought when they first started. I just think construction prices have gone up. And I, it's a way more expensive facility than I think they were thinking of.
Big building when you're in the inside as well as the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're planning an April opening, is what they told us last week, so.
Is it really?
Was it really? They, they told me March.
Yeah, I, I think, the, the new guy, the new guy just showed up, and he says 90 days just for FF and E, didn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Furniture and kitchen equipment and carpeting and all that sort of stuff. And they're a ways away from that. They're doing drywall right now. I think seven days a week they're doing drywall. Yeah, so they're, they're, they're-
Yes, they were doing that on, I heard them on Sunday.
Yeah, I think they got a crew in there, and they're just, they're going at it. All right. Any other questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with WebDBR LLC in the amount of $184,079.81 to satisfy contractual obligations associated with disposal of contaminated soils at 25 North Warden Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Mark Hart, to authorize the mayor's signature on the settlement agreement with Wenatchee DBR LLC in the amount of $184,079.81 to satisfy contractual obligations associated with disposal of contaminated soils at 25 North Warden. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Mayor's report. I'll say two or three things. We did have a, we, myself and Allison and Rob and Steve met with the school district Wednesday morning at nine. Had a number of items mostly real estate oriented. We did talk about school resource officer. The chief is excited to get another officer to get two up there. As I told the school district when I met with them, I said, you know, when we started this, we had one for a long time, then we didn't. And when it got recreated, I think either my first or second year mayor, we were broke and they were rich. And so they paid for three-quarters of it, we paid for a quarter of it. Tide has sort of changed a little bit. We really need a second one. So I've said, how about if we pay for three-quarters of this one, you pay for a quarter of it? So in essence, they're paying for one, we're paying for one.
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah. And I, I think they're going to consider it. It would only be a $30,000 ask for them. There's lots going on at that high school and at the middle schools that really need another officer there. So hopefully they're considering that. Even if they said yes, I don't think we could have someone there until, I don't know, I think Chief Crown said January or February at the earliest. So we did talk about a number of real estate items we have going on with them, including, we're doing a TIB grant for Apple Land Drive behind the-
Red Apple.
Red Apple, excuse me, behind the track. And so that could get sidewalked in parallel parking as opposed to back-end parking. So just wanted to make sure. And as we noticed, Rob noticed that the, the concrete sort of sitting area, which was built by, as Mark reminded me, the industrial arts class, they built a lot of that on city right-of-way. We had a little work on, work on that a little bit as well. But anyhow, I think the conversation there went great. You got everything you needed, Rob. We talked a little bit about, we have a $4 million water tank at Okanagan. It's running out of its useful life. Our utility people say the best thing to do is just buy the acre next door, build a brand-new one, decommission it. And so we'll probably get a deal with the school district. We'll try to figure out where it fits best on their property. And they were, again, we're a long ways away from that, but at least trying to tee that up with them. And then we've had some developers looking at the property on the other side of Springwater. You know, they've got a big hunk of property. Then there's another 170 acres over there on the other side. So they were looking for some access, because we got to connect Springwater to Maple, sort of through Bart Clennan's property there. So we gave them some ideas on how to get a road across, and I think that that conversation went pretty well. They were concerned about it going right through the middle of their property, and I think we have a way where we can get it up on a hillside and not really affect it. So that seemed to, I thought that meeting went really, really well. So we'll see if we get anything out of that. Today, we had our employee appreciation breakfast. So Lyle's wearing the shirt that we all got to wear today, as is Linda. So I thought that went really well. We must have had, I don't know, 80, 90 people there. So thanks to our HR department and Tammy and Allison and everyone, and Anna took 100 pictures or more. So it was great. Really nice to have everybody there today. Some of us got the opportunity to tour the jail today. I can't think of anything more depressing. So that place is a bit rough. Bill Larson is trying to figure out a funding model that sort of works. I think we're going to get a letter requesting this $25 processing fee. Not sure you've got that sort of in the budget yet or not. I don't know what the other contracts say, but our $96 a day contract that we've had automatically renewed at the same rate October 1st. So I think the other cities are going to see a rate increase. We pretty much, I think, they know that our contract renewed. I saw the last month where we had 46 people. Are we going to be $400,000 under budget on that this year?
I think, yeah, I think we'll probably be about $300,000 under, under what, yeah, under what our budget's going to be.
Okay.
Because of the change in the way they did their billing, we, our bills in January, February, March were much smaller than what they would have been under the old model. And so it was a little bit of a catch-up game that happened the first three months.
Have we had one bill that would have been equal to what we were paid in the past? No. So we've had nine bills, and not one of them got to our average monthly one the year before, where we just gave them the fixed fee. So.
Our average before was about 145, 150,000 a month.
I used to, when we used to do that, by daily rate.
Our one, we may have, we may have had one that was 145.
Okay. 126, 88, 100.
Between 100 and 130.
Yeah. At some point, that, so that conversation has to, you were in there, and they need to get more staffing. And I, I'm not really sure how this is all going to end, other than, you don't, they don't invite you to the party without asking for a donation, I'm guessing. Assuming that's why we're invited.
So is Douglas County still taking theirs to Okanagan?
Yes. I think they book here if they have to, and then they stay a day, and then they drive them up to Okanagan County.
Wouldn't it be better for Schleen County Regional Center to, if Douglas County were here?
I, I'm assuming there's some math. We're 240 so or so guests, if you will. I suppose they could handle 300 or some, and that would certainly help, but they need more staff. It's, building's in tough shape. So I need to spend some money just on the physical plant. And then I, I don't, I don't know the right sort of answer there. It, it, there's something that has to happen. I don't know what it's going to be. But again, I think you don't get invited to the party unless you're going to be part of the dessert.
Well, if they want us to, you know, contribute in any way, man, you know, I'd push back and say, well, at least you could be nice to our law enforcement.
Yeah.
When I've done my ride-alongs, the, our, our guys here at Wenatchee say that when they go book people-
Well, they don't, they don't want them. Yeah.
That the jail people are just rude.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I think so, it's, again, you get to the point where, I mean, they were telling us stories today about people in, on the bottom floor where they're having mental issues, they just lock them up in a room and give them a blanket and-
Give them a mop and a blanket.
Go to the bathroom all over themselves. And, and so when our guys are bringing in, and this is the place they prob, it's, it's not good for us, not good for them, there's just no winners in that sort of situation. And so I think they're probably frustrated, right? I got to deal with another one, right? And, and our guys are getting the bad guys off the street, and then they got to figure out how to deal with them.
It's not our guys' fault.
I know, no. I'm not saying, I'm just, it's just trying to appreciate both sides, I guess.
Yeah. It's a lot of things, like the backlog and the courts and so on.
Yeah.
Creating the problem.
So anyhow, just wanted you to know that we did tour it. Allison and I met with our folks at Parkside today, working through the punch list. Allison said that that was one of the better meetings we had had with them. I hadn't attended too many of them. So it looks like they were going to work on the punch list and hopefully get most of those things done without a city contribution. So we're hopeful. But they're, they're holding $250,000 of retainage on the general contractor, and they have a list. So have a little leverage.
Yeah.
And it sounds like there may be a little bit of money to help fix some other stuff. They weren't saying no today. So I think that went okay. Allison, help me out with the rest of the stuff.
We will be at Schleen County on Monday, helping the Trust for Public Land folks with the presentation about Metow Park.
Have you got ahold of Teresa, or Mama, or Rufus?
Carrie was doing that, and he was going to confirm tomorrow with who. He was struggling with some attendance. So Ruth, if you could also help out there, that would be great.
Yeah. So we're at, we're going in Monday with the Trust for Public Lands and requesting-
Is it out again?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
So we're asking for some distressed county dollar money for Metow Park. We asked for $250,000. So might be a little bit of an uphill battle under the, does it create economic development and jobs? But we got a letter from the port that said that maybe it does. So we'll, we'll-
Be very careful.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes. Anything else?
So next week, next Wednesday, the first of the North Wenatchee Avenue meetings occurs for business owners from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday at the Confluence Technology Center. So starting the outreach process to kind of look at form and function for North Wenatchee Avenue. The following week will be for the community on the 14th from 4:00 to 7:00. Important meetings.
As my understanding, although they wouldn't give me the list, that Rivercom has a short list. Where their executive director, I asked for the short list, and they wouldn't tell me. So I guess maybe next Thursday, there's a meet and greet. I guess if you go to, they'll show, tell you who's in the finalist. Council members, anything for the good of the order?
Councilmember Mark Hart and I attended the meeting at the café last Saturday.
Okay.
And they are organizing and recruiting people to run for council in District One.
Okay.
And they're really enthused, and it was a great meeting.
Good.
They brought a council member in from Yakima to speak, and she is amazing.
It's one of Ruth's friends, she's-
Yeah. She's really great. And she just, and she pointed out the difference between our two communities. She said, the courts forced us to do this. Your council was proactive and chose to do it. So that's a big difference here. And I was very productive.
Good. Remember the, Thursday, the 29th, the 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. joint session with the Downtown Association Board?
Yep.
Or kind of annual get-together at the Top of the Coast Hotel?
Yep.
Make sure to RSVP.
Okay. Tammy, will you RSVP for me? Because I'll forget.
I haven't seen that invitation command.
Okay. I got one directly, but would you just recommend to know that?
Send it to you.
I've got a few things on my plate the next two weeks, so. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
Go Panthers.
And I will end with, yeah, you got East Wenatchee football game tonight?
Yeah.
And just so Tammy doesn't quit bugging me, I'm getting married tomorrow afternoon.
Woo!
Don't quit talking about it. The next weekend, I'm going on a honeymoon. So I'm following councilmember as far as to Mexico. So, all right, everybody, we're adjourned.